Hello, I'd like to call this school board special meeting Tuesday, June 15th, 7:00 PM to order. Ms. Robel, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Bergnick.
Present.
Mrs. Brancato.
Here.
Mrs. Crossen.
Here.
Mr. Dixon. Mrs. Islandberg. Mr. Gotteson.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
I am here, not there.
Mr. Panofsky.
I'm here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Gate members present.
Can we all please stand for the Fudge of Allegiance?
Fudge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all, God bless America.
All right. We had an executive session today from 6:00 to about 6:40 for personnel reasons. Any other announcements? Okay, um, community comments, Krista Di Polio? Di Polio?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Dr. Bedden, Centennial School Board Directors, Administrators, and Community Members. My name is Krista Di Pollo and I live at 48 Chase Avenue in Ivyland. As of Friday, I have an eighth grader at Log and a junior at Tenet. My husband and I have been very happy with the education our children have received over, not just this current year, but over the last 16 years. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and what I want to share with you are my comments about our current track, the high school track. Per the Centennial Board of School Director minutes for the special meeting held on January 7th, 2020, the proposed budget included the line item 2020-2021 major capital projects. In that was the William Tenet High School stadium project for $1 million. The special board meeting held on June 16th, 2020 approved this budget unanimously. Understandably, this project got delayed due to COVID-19 and the resulting closures. However, as of Monday morning, June 14th, the football field turf has been removed, but the track remains. I have heard the plan is to replace the track a year from now. I am concerned about this and want to share these concerns. Specifically, there is a sinkhole in Lane 8, and the fix that they used for the last year was only intended to be there for one year. So my question is, how is this sinkhole being remediated and what is the cost for this coming school year? The long jump board is the original one and is fully rotted. The high jump and pole vault pads and standards are broken and have not been maintained. We have a district champion discus athlete and our discus cage is not in good working order. During other events, gaiters and golf carts drive over the track, further compromising its integrity. If our track is not safe, we cannot host invitationals, which bring money as well as credibility to the district. Many other sports teams in our district, as well as other area schools, use our track for training. If the track is in poor condition, it becomes a safety and liability issue for hundreds of student athletes, as well as staff, coaches, and spectators. We also have the Unified Track Program, and those children had an amazing year this year in Unified Track, but those children do have some motoric and physical differences, and their safety should be paramount, especially on the track. If modifications were made to that approved budget, where can I find the final vote that changed the approved budget? For example, if the money in 2019-2020 was approved for the track replacement, I don't know where that money went. I looked, went and looked back at all the board meeting minutes and couldn't find that. And in addition, I was curious when this decision was made not to replace the track. And then what is being done with the monies apportioned for the track replacement? I do understand that Miller Sports Construction's opinion is that the track still has life in it if properly maintained. I have been in this district for 16 years, and properly maintained isn't always something that happens, unfortunately, in this district. For example, I refer you to the middle school swimming pools. They haven't been maintained and they're just sitting. So I'm not necessarily all that confident that properly maintained will happen. My other question is, did Miller Sports Construction provide the amount for the properly maintained cost? And is it more cost-effective to replace the current track now versus making temporary repairs, which also become a safety concern? I would also ask, what feedback are coaches and athletic staff provided to you before the decision not to replace the track was made? Walking on the track is different than running and training on the track. I do feel strongly that the cross-country and track and field students deserve the same quality of equipment that the football team receives. I don't know how it was determined that the football field was in worse condition than the track. But I did want to share, and I didn't want to make this completely negative, so I wanted to share the good news about our track program for the current school year that we just finished. Both the boys and girls cross-country teams had winning records, and the undefeated girls cross-country team were league champions. Yay. During spring track, the boys team again had a winning record and won the league and sent seven athletes to districts and two qualified for states. As mentioned, we have a district champion in discus and a district qualifier in the high jump. Above of all else, we have an absolutely amazing coach for our student athletes. Vinnie Murphy has turned our program around. There are not enough good things I can say about the current cross-country winner and boys' spring program coach and the incredible impact he has made for so many students. He needs to have the proper working equipment in order to continue to coach our athletes at the current level they are performing at. We do want Coach Vinnie here for a long time. In closing, I do appreciate your time and attention to my comments and ask that you move ahead with the approved budget to replace the track this summer. As always, I'm here to be part of the solution, not the problem. If there's anything I can do to help with this situation, please consider it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is someone keeping a timer on community comments?
Yes. Next community comment is Mark Barle.
Burley.
Burley. Just state your name and address when you come up.
All right, my name is Mark Burley and my address is 761 Valley Road. We're on the edge of Warmster. Anyway, I want to also take the time to thank you guys for letting me speak too as well. I appreciate that. I would also like to make a comment about William Tenet Stadium turf and track replacements. So based on what I can locate in the meeting agendas, back in the past two years, the budget was approved on January 7th of 2020 for the stadium project for the 2020 and 2021 school year that just passed, costing $1 million on the spot. Of course, we know COVID came up and I know there were a lot of monkey wrenches and things of the sort. The track replacement was apparently cut this year, as we all know, from what I just heard last week. Now it's delayed rather till 2022 and '23 school year. Only repair, only a repair is being made, like a temporary repair, but almost $2.4 million will be spent on refreshing middle school auditoriums. I think other taxpayers will agree that the safety should come first, the safety of the athletes' welfare. I ask myself, isn't the repair of the sinkhole costing the taxpayers money? The track should be replaced along with the turf, as originally planned, to save money. And because, you know, who knows, in 2022 comes inflation. The parts needed to get a new track by then could go up, way up, as we know. The cost of things are going skyrocketing as we speak. Recently, anyway, and we know the cost of lumber now is up at least eightfold. It's a lot, though, something like that. Yeah, absolutely insane. So my concern now is the sinkholes, of course, as mentioned by Kristen over there. Tough act to follow, by the way. Risking injury to athletes that have not been detected yet, and I'm guessing they've been lucky, though. But yes, it's right by the visitor stands corner. If you're running counterclockwise, as soon as you kind of go to right the bend and approach the visitor sides, right there on the outside of Lane 8. And who's to say that sinkhole doesn't increase and expand further into the track or even worse yet into the visitor stands, under the stands there, which can be extremely dangerous to and disastrous for. So I'm thinking maybe the word, the easiest case scenario might be, you know, it might get some ankle or knee injuries, though, if the athlete missteps that and uses that lane, if they have to stay in that lane, Lane 8, that is. So for instance, if there's a hole in my roof, though, I'm not going to, you know, just let the water drip in when the rain comes there and put a bucket there in order to avoid, you know, my wooden floor for buckling. I want to hire somebody to fix the roof and repair that right away, too, as well. Also, what if the track renovation gets postponed, yet again goes into inflation? What if 2022 becomes 2024, possibly 2025, though? And sometimes it's not easy to read in the future. A lot of things come up and come about. Of course, I know we're only going to get what we put into the program, you know, here. If we build it, they will come. And I'm talking about like the future athletes that are coming through the district. I got twin daughters. They're going to be seniors at William Tenet next year, and they've been in the district their whole life, pretty much, and they're forever grateful and believe me, trust me on this one. But I'm speaking now towards the future, you know, upcoming generations and stuff like this that's coming and being fed up by the middle schools. So I know since it's out right now about the sinkhole, I'm thinking this could be like a... Three minutes, I'll finish up a few things real quick. A toward issue, of course, and the question would be that is, you know, if somebody gets injured there, could that have been prevented? If the answer is yes, then perhaps, you know, I should have listened, kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Mrs. Crossen.
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, I have a question. What percentage, and Mr. Greenwood, I don't know if you can answer this, or Dr. Bedden, what percentage of Centennial's budget is to fixed costs that are required? In other words, like unfortunately, the track is not required. Like there are some things that, like by contracts and things, we must, teacher salaries, you know, salaries for administrators, everybody who works for the district, all the support staff, and there are other fixed costs as well. They are, what, 75% of the overall budget? 70?
Those are the 80, I think.
They are the entire budget, right? So this work that's being done, being discussed is part of the whole.
Right. I don't mean the increase. I mean, like what percent of the operating budget in a given year are they?
So we have a capital budget, right? So those fall outside of the general fund budget. So not to make it too confusing, right? There's the general fund budget that we support, right? And then there's the capital fund budget, right? Those items would fall under the capital fund budget. Capital fund budget is supported through positive general fund financial performance, as well as from bond financing.
I mean, my general question here that I'm getting to is, how much are those fixed immovable, we must meet them costs going up this year?
0.76%.
How much?
0.76%.
0.76%. And this tax increase that we're passing tonight would represent a what increase on our budget?
2.224%. Increase to real estate taxes, if that was your question.
Well, it's real estate taxes, but I'm wondering how much money over... Like how much more is what we're going to bring in next year over what we're bringing in this year? Is it, I mean, because you raised the real estate taxes, but that doesn't necessarily count for all income.
Does not. Give you the edge in a second.
And while you're looking in that, can you...
It's almost $2.3 million, the increase from last budget to this budget.
And what would the increase need to be to include the track? Do you have that? Like a roundabout, what would we need to approve to include the field and the track?
We approved a 2.5%.
That would take care of both?
I think that would take care of the track. That would allow us to bring, to put the track in the plan. Because we would be able to take the surplus, the positive performance from this year and apply it towards that fund.
And that would be this year, we could do the track and the field?
Correct.
And one last question. What is the Act 1 index this year?
3%.
So we'd still be under?
We'd still be under.
Excuse me. Mrs. Brancato.
So, Mr. Greenwood, I don't envy you, but we originally approved for the field and the track to be done at the same time, correct?
That is correct.
And then we're moving that off the table now to save money?
So as you may recall, right, so last year, or the last fall, the fall of 2019.
Correct.
Right? The high school, we got the call in August that said our high school was not stable.
Correct.
And that we needed to fix that.
Correct.
So throughout last year, we worked to address those problems, right? That cost the district currently $1.4, almost $1.5 million, right? So that wasn't in anybody's long-range plan.
Right, right.
That wasn't understood when we met in January, right? We weren't sure how that was going to play out, right? We were certainly pursuing remedies to recover those funds.
Right.
But in order for school to start, those monies, that had to be elevated in the priority order. That had to be addressed, and was done so last summer during the pandemic, right? So the building was secured initially in September so that we could open in 2019, and then in 2020, it was that work that was done over the summer for the permanent fix.
Right, so how do we decide that it's the track that gets taken off the table? How is it decided what gets removed?
It was delayed, right?
Right.
In order to balance our budget and to minimize, right, the financial impact of trying to do all of those simultaneously.
Okay, so if we're saying that the track is a potential danger and another renovation is not a potential danger, but more of an upgrade, why not remove something else that's not a potential danger? Because as I'm hearing it, if these kids are running around the track and somebody gets a leg injury, I can speak from experience that a leg injury is no joke and it can ruin a child's life.
We understood from Miller, it's the Sports Construction, right, that the track is in okay condition right now and that it can be repaired, right? So we reached out to them on more than one occasion to do that, right? The only other projects that are being considered are the auditoriums in both middle schools.
So that can't wait?
Those auditoriums are, I'm sure, if you've been in them, right?
Yeah, I have.
They are very dated.
They are.
You could delay those if you chose, right?
But that's cosmetic.
But it is cosmetic, and it's used by every student at the middle school.
But it's just cosmetic.
Whereas the track is not, right? So the track isn't impacting every student.
To me, and it's just my opinion, cosmetics, you know, I have carpets that I'd love to replace, but I don't have the money.
Sure.
But my garage door falls down sometimes, and that's a danger, so the garage door has to come first.
Sure.
So I'm not a big fan of, you know, cosmetics. I understand it would be great to have an upgrade, because you're right. I've been in those auditoriums for way longer, 30-some years, so.
I'm sure.
You're right.
Yep.
They would look nice, but I think we have the potential for children to be injured, and we have special needs children that run on that track. We have people that walk on that track. I heard from quite a few very upset parents. I heard from somebody from PIAA that they feel that our track is a danger.
Sure.
And they're saying that some events cannot happen at our district anymore because they can't risk other children from other schools. That's really upsetting. Because once a kid gets a leg injury, their athletics career is over. I'm sorry, it just is. And these kids count on, these kids count on that college money. Our track team's doing better this year than for many years. And I'm not just saying track. I think our facilities, not that Robert doesn't do an amazing job, Robert, because I think you do, but if something's on the table because it's not as pretty and it's a little outdated, so what? You know, I drive a car that's 10 years old. It's outdated, but guess what? It runs great.
Sure.
Okay.
And I don't think, I don't think we should put kids' injuries on the table for any amount of money. We could switch it. You know, you can't always get everything, but let's put the kid's safety first, and I don't know that we're doing that.
Okay, Dr. Bedden?
Obviously, this is predating me, but I do want to make sure that there's clarity to this situation. Having been an athletic director in two different districts and also certified by the National Association for High Schools as a certified athletic administrator, what exactly is the work that's going to be done in auditorium that supports instructional program? Because I don't want to mislead people. What is it that we're saying is going to be done in auditorium? Because when this was brought to my attention, I started asking questions. And I'm not so sure I would just say it's cosmetic. I just want to be clear what that is, because if that's what it is, then we need to be honest, but if it's...
The asbestos flooring is going to be removed, abated. The seats that are there will be removed and replaced. The lighting structure around the stage will be replaced. Those are the main components, following last year or two years ago, our work to address the sound system.
So I just wanted to be clear what that is, because I agree with Ms. Brancato in principle of the cosmetic, but that's not what was presented to me when you talk about, when I went to visit, the seats and the concern about.
I'm sorry to jump in here, but we don't have that button to raise your hand. My understanding, though, is these are coming from two different budgets. Aren't the auditorium renovations coming out of the GISA contract?
They're being all funded through the same. It's part of the GISA program in establishing it, but it's being funded primarily through the bond refinancing.
So I...
Sorry. You said the floors are asbestos, Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
And we have to go through asbestos abatement for it?
Yes.
And we have kids encountering asbestos flooring on a daily basis? That's not good. Okay.
But asbestos flooring is not a danger until you start taking it up.
Correct.
It's fine. Asbestos is not a danger until it starts coming up. When you start taking it up, that's when it's an issue. So not just because the floor is asbestos.
Okay, and did you... I'm sorry.
President, so I just wanted, one, to be clear what the work was going to be done so the board makes an informed decision. Obviously, I'm a proponent of athletics and having coached track, even state champions, and both at a college and high school level. So I want both of them to have my way. You know, fine arts is a big part of this community also. I want the track fixed. I want the turf fixed. So that's where I hope we end up and not be forcing and choose one over the other, because they all are... You know, I met with parents the other day, and one of the things I appreciated them saying is, while some of the districts get touted for their test scores, they talk highly about all the other things that we do for students in Centennial School District that are beyond test scores. So then I asked the question to Mr. Warrenby, you know, what is it that they're going to do? Because I was concerned when I hear that there's a safety concern. So is there clarity to what the repair looks like and why they said it had a year of life in it? I think that needs to be not just a statement, but what does that mean? And what's the standard to get clarity to that? And I ask for you to get that in writing rather than someone's word. So could you speak to that?
So Bill Miller, excuse me. Bill Miller did provide me with an email later in the day after you asked me to reach out to him. So there's about four conditions on the track. I believe you brought up one where there's a lot of thoroughfare across the track by the double gates. There's some wear and tear right there. And there's also wear and tear right at the number eight, right? The lower circle of the eight is where the soft spot is. How they would treat that is they dig it out, like a square, kind of what you do in a pavement, dig it out, and rebuild that cavity up to the existing grade or the existing grade of the track. The other little things that are on the track, which are three other rips or puncture, once a puncture looked like somebody dropped something on it and it just depressed it and cracked it, that's easily repairable as well. Having ran many years ago on a similar track, it's, that track isn't in bad shape. Is it time to maybe get it done? Sure, one could argue that because we're doing the turf. They're both the same age. They both wear differently, as was stated. Our turf field does get more and more use. Harsh Bishop Woods is a perfect example of more use. It's also a soccer field. It could also be a field hockey field, so it gets considerable use. So in my professional opinion, again, putting my license on, the turf field is in worse condition than the track. The track has, as Bill said, it's great this year for resurfacing. It's good next year resurfacing. In 2024, 2025, it would be a candidate for a whole replacement, dig it all up, put it back down. So there is some synergy to doing it now. Is it impossible to do it next year? No. Mr. Miller is holding on to his cost, as he has, I think, since like 2018. It actually came down $20,000 because he has a new vendor for the actual product that he uses. But I'm indifferent to doing it now or doing it next year. The benefit of doing it now, obviously, is they're out there, right? They're tearing up the turf. They're mobilized. And in speaking to Bill as well, I said if the board were to approve tonight to go ahead and move forward with the track, can you let your suppliers know? He goes, already done. No problem. It shouldn't be a problem whatsoever. So it could happen in concert with the turf.
The point I was sort of trying to make is that, in general, construction costs over the last 10 years, each year, have gone up 3.5% to 5.5%. Yep. For a quarter of 1%, we could do both? Because as you pointed out, I'm sorry, I mean, you're not wrong. I'm sorry, I forget your name. Mark. As Mark pointed out, construction costs right now are explodingly increasing. And next year, you know, every year you wait on this stuff, it doesn't get cheaper. And for a quarter of a percent, lock it in.
I'm sorry, it's going to go down. I mean, it's going up now because of COVID. The prices are going to come down, Andrew.
They don't, I mean, they haven't gone down in years.
Yes, Andrew, they skyrocketed because of COVID.
I understand that they won't continue to increase at the rate they're increasing, but construction costs don't ever go down.
Yes, they're going to come down.
Mr. Bergnick?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Warrenby or Mr. Greenwood, it looks like the auditorium refresh is actually in two years. One is at $2.373 million and the other $2.3858 in the capital budget. Is that correct?
It should not be, Mr. Bergnick.
I'm looking at the attachment that is part of the capital budget adoption this evening, and it looks like the money comes out twice. Am I reading the report wrong?
The $2.3, $2,385,000 does both auditoriums.
Okay, got it. And then there's a balance, after that, there's a balance of $380,000 in the bond issue fund and a balance...
Right, that we don't, we do, we end the year with a balance. That is correct.
And there's a balance in the capital reserve fund of $279,000. What would it cost to do the track?
The track is $419,000.
So between the balances in those two funds, we have enough money to do the track?
But we don't have any other money coming in, right? So you will have then a 0%, you have a, not 0, but a close to 0, right? Capital fund, right? So if we are able to fund that through positive financial performances, right? We can continue doing that. So that is a risk to spend it all now, right? Against the unknown, right? There's certainly many unknowns here in the district. The high school structural issues were certainly a very large unknown. The impact of COVID certainly was an unknown. But yes, right, we have an ending balance as of 2022 in our capital fund of $687,000. If you chose to use that, $419,000, then you've got $200,000 for the next two years. That is somewhat risky if we are not funding into the future, right?
And what you mean by funding is the message that we have continually tried to convey about, as we continue to drop significantly below the Act 1, we're not generating any revenue that can be dedicated to these projects that you've continued to outlay, just like I think was mentioned. There seems to be a historical pattern of not including those in the planning process holistically that we need to start changing going forward, which is identifying, you know, like he said, if you had a 2.5, there's X dollars. And if you do the rolling that he said, then it produces that, and you dedicate it to these projects that don't have to be included in a tax increase that they actually earmarked.
Mr. Greenwood, could you open up page 3 of the capital budget attachment? And explain to me how I'm not seeing the $2.3 million taken out twice? And explain to me how I'm not seeing the 2.3 million taken out twice?
I'm not seeing it.
Looks like it's taken out once in 2020, 21, and again in 21, 22.
It was, it was not done in 2021. The work was not done. So that balance should carry over and then in 2022 it was.
I'm not seeing the balance carrying over. The report says the estimated balance is 898,000.
So if I take to the presentation. All right, so this is the capital plan. This slide identifies the projects that are shown. Okay, 2021, there's a million, $1,482,000 to replace, to address the structural issues at William Tenet High School. There was another $160,000 spent in some odd remedies and some things that had carried over from the prior year. The 21, 22 list of projects there shows the middle school auditoriums at 2.3 million. The William Tenet High School auditorium, $46,000 to address their, their audio desk. The field, the field turf, 448,000. A conditions assessment that follows some earlier concerns at the middle school that we are looking to have done and a contingency of $50,000. That totals 3,055,000. 2023, you see the track being done, cameras and some contingency. This slide shows the opening fund balances and then where additions were made to it. So you can see we ended in June 30th of 2020. Our opening fund balance is $340,000, 340. We had our bond refinancing added $5 million to the capital fund. Less those for a balance of 3,741.
So that, that actually does not match what's on page three of the attachment that is the capital budget adoption document.
So I will look at that, but this is the, this is the, the capital plan.
So Mr. Birdnik, are you saying that we took the money out and we never put the money back? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Greenwood, I wonder if you could pull up page three of the.
I tried to, Chris. I was unable to pull that up from the stand here.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm not able to share my screen so you can see what I'm looking at.
In the meantime, I have a general question. I see that the.
Well, can you give me one second? Mr. Pranowski has been trying to.
Sure.
Mr. Pranowski?
My question's pretty quick. We were saying that there's a difference between a 2.25 and a 2.5% tax increase. That 2.5 would fix the track. Do we know what that extra 0.25% breaks down to per taxpayer? What the additional increase would be for them?
The difference between a 2.5 and a 2.24 is $10 a year.
Okay, thank you.
90 cents a month.
Thank you.
I have a question, which was, I see that the track is locked in for next year at 419,800. Would the contractor who we're getting that number from be willing to? Like if we told him we can do it tomorrow, would that price go down any?
Get a cost savings?
Because I would just imagine cash in his pocket now is better than a year from now.
Believe it or not, Mr. Dixon, Mr. Miller's been holding that cost since 2018. And as I was stating before, it did come down $20,000 by virtue of just the product that he's using. He's using an alternate vendor. That's where the savings was. So he's been holding the price that's depicted for three years?
Mm-hmm. He's guaranteeing.
And he's holding the price. If we were to do it tomorrow or next summer, he's holding the price.
How much would it cost to repair the little, the issues to make it safe and runnable now?
That I couldn't tell you.
Mr. Greenwood, I just wanted to apologize. I figured it out. I figured out the handout. So thank you though for pulling it up.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Goddickson?
I, the, the cost of 1.4 that we had, what, last year at the very beginning of the school year? Was that money that we diverted or redirected, you know, from doing the fields?
Yes, right, so the.
And then the question is, we are expecting to get that money back through the lawsuit, right?
We, we are expecting to get a, a, you know, a large percentage of that money back. You're correct.
Have we gotten any information on that?
We have been working. We've been pushing the other defendants towards mediation. We have not been successful in that, so we think that may go to court.
All right, Mrs. Brancato?
Robert, you said we don't know the cost of repairing the track?
Track is 419,000.
No, to repair, just to repair. I'm asking you.
No, Ms. Brancato, there's, in my personal opinion, those four areas aren't high expenses.
Right.
They're out there right now. They could easily repair them. I'm not going to even guess what that repair cost was, but it would be negligible in terms of.
Okay.
The cost.
But, but Mr. Greenwood, you're saying as of right now, we actually have the money to do both things. We have the money to do it.
Yes.
Okay. So if we have the money, so if we have the money to do it without raising taxes, why don't we just do it?
Because what else?
Because what will happen? I really wasn't asking you, Andrew.
So, so the concern, as we have shared since January, right, is that long-term view, right?
Right, I understand the long-term view, but right now we're in, you know, we've had one heck of a year, every single one of us.
Sure.
And, you know, again, I'm going to go back to the cosmetic thing. There's nothing unsafe about our, about our auditoriums. It's not unsafe.
Right.
It might not be as pretty as we want, but it's not unsafe. And I think safety needs to come first.
And I believe that, I believe the work that they will do to fix the track will make it safe, right? We're not going to leave the hole, right? We're not going to not address the.
But it's very concerning when.
Right? We are going to address them, right?
But it's very concerning when PIAA officials are making a phone call to me and I have nothing to do with track.
Right.
Nothing.
I don't, I mean, that's, that's unusual.
And, and saying to me, are you going to, are you going to speak up? Are you going to stick up for these kids and say? And I, and quite honestly, the person who called must know somebody because they knew I had a kid with a leg injury. And I'm going to tell you, it's no joke. It is absolutely no joke.
I know.
So I'm not really willing to risk one of these kids ruining their leg. I'm not.
Okay.
One ACL tear leads to operation after operation and we can't risk that. So if we have to look at an unsightly auditorium for another year, I say let's look at that auditorium just the way it is.
So is, is all this based on what we do tonight? Like if we did a zero, would that throw a whole monkey wrench in everything that you have going on?
If you did a 0% tax increase?
Yes.
Yes.
So that would, that would, the field, everything would be done?
Yes.
Madam President, if I might.
Mr. Martin?
It would seem to me that all this should have been done before the night that comes with the final budget vote. We have all these issues which weren't raised before that are being raised now and we're supposed to vote on a final budget. If it were up to me only, I don't have information about refurbishing, complete evaluation, about why we need to refurbish auditoriums. If it was up to me, I would postpone that, do the track and with the balance of the money, put it against the budget and get it down as low as we possibly can. But doing it at the last minute is, doesn't make it very easy to have all the facts that you need to. We had ample opportunity. Mr. Greenwood's been very good with communicating stuff. We're making the, I don't know if we're going to vote on each, how we're going to proceed here to get a budget, but I, I think the track might make sense. The auditoriums might not. And the money that was budgeted for the auditoriums to balance, if you just deduct the track cost, the balance of that should be applied against the budget to get it down as close to zero. We'll look at the auditoriums. I've not even been in the auditoriums to see what needs to be done. I don't know how many people I've been, other than the high school one I've been in, but not the junior high school one.
So let me just try to get this. So if we did a zero, what you showed us is, is just not accurate anymore? Is, is that correct?
Correct.
So if we were to do the 2.224 and not do the auditoriums, could we do the field and track?
Would it make sense to walk through the presentation?
Yes, absolutely.
To, then we can address it in its entirety and then we can plan accordingly, right? So.
Presentations, we've done this about four times.
Presentation again.
Well, is it the same? I mean, I've gotten it. I have a copy. You're kind enough to send me a copy. What's going to be new in the presentation that wasn't there before?
Well, it's also for the community to hear.
The community's already heard it too.
17 times.
I can't say what they've heard or what they, I just know that, that when we do, do this, we present it to the community.
But if we do what Mr. Martin is saying, let, let the auditoriums go, fix the track, we still have a positive balance and we're good to go. That's kind of simple.
Mr. Greenwood, we cannot transfer money from the bond fund or the capital reserve fund to the general fund for operations, can we?
We cannot.
Thank you, sir.
So wait, does that mean we're missing money? Like break that down for me.
No, you, you can, as Mr. Birdnik said, right, you cannot transfer money from the bond fund to the general fund, right? You cannot run operations on financed money, right? So that idea, that money has to stay in the capital fund. So your option of taking the, doing the track versus addressing the auditoriums in each of the middle schools that all those children use, that is your choice, right? You can make that priority. That money is, is in the capital fund. It's not in the general fund, right?
Is their education going to be any better if the auditoriums is prettier? Or if it has new carpet or prettier seats? Their education is not going to be better. Their health is not going to be better. We're not risking them by making them look at, at an ugly floor or an ugly chair. There's no risk.
Can I? Ms. Heidenberg?
Just for clarity, Mr. Greenwood doesn't make the decisions based on, or regarding this. We do and so, and we, and we take feedback from the community. And I apologize, Mr. Greenwood. I feel like you're getting.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm totally fine. So if, if you may, right, and I apologize to the community. I apologize to you, Mr. Martin. If you, if you allow us to just roll through the slides that we have, I will make the, make it as quick as possible. But I do think they show an interesting aspect of our district comparatively that is important to the discussions, right? It is important to the discussions. Should Centennial post a zero, right? Most certainly, our bond rating would be affected, right? That would cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars when we look to refinance. Or if we look to take a new issue because we have not saved accordingly, right? Those are aspects that we have talked about throughout the past six months, again and again. The notion of a zero, while talked about in January, I believed, and I could have been wrong, was, was not carried forward, right? Our proposed budget was at 2.5, right? And at 2.5 in the May 25th proposed budget, the proposed budget that was shared with the community had a 2.5% increase and a $48,000 surplus. Positive performance, right? That was following a year that the budget was a negative $1.3 million. So if, yes.
Just to be clear, you use the term surplus. In essence, it really isn't a surplus. Is it, it's there.
Correct. It is.
It's something just in case something happens.
Right, right. So what we tried to do, right, in, in full transparency, right? We've tried to identify the segments of the budget, right? At times, that, that number could be found in the expenses, right? So I could make it a zero, right? I could show a zero profit and I could put that number in the, in the expenses and show a transfer out, right? So that, that could happen in, in the PDE format. We've tried to be explicitly and trans, most as transparent as possible. So we show the expenses, we show the revenue and we show the, the positive performance. And as Dr. Ben has talked about, as I've talked about, we would intend to transfer those funds to dedicated surpluses, right? To the general fund, to the capital fund, to the debt service fund, should you, should we decide to do that? And use that money for our future, right? That becomes our savings. So the home analogy, right, I would want to fix the hole in my roof, right? But if I don't save money to be able to do that, that could be problematic, right? So it's that responsible, long-term planning, which we have tried to be very focused on this year. So we've tried to be transparent. I'm showing the, the surplus. And as we've talked about, we would utilize that surplus either in our transferring it to our capital fund or to debt service fund or to main, allow it to maintain in the general fund so that we can raise that to the 8% target set by PDE.
So 2.224 included the turf on the field because we've all, graduation day, we all stood on it and we all agreed that it was a mess. And you said 2.5 would include the track?
Yes.
And then we would still be able to do the auditoriums for the children's plays and choir and all that stuff?
Yes, because the 2.5 would increase this year's, based on our long-term plan, right? So we'd be very focused on the long-term plan, not just making decisions one year at a time. So that has been our core. If, if nothing else, we have tried to maintain that long view. So if we did a 2.5, we would have $218,000 in surplus that we would transfer to the capital fund to fund the track. The following year, that same, everything else remaining, we would have over $300,000 compared to $84,000 at a 2.224, given the same tax increase next year. That money would also go to support that capital fund. So we would use those dollars, that positive financial performance to fund, to fund our capital fund, right? To transfer to our capital fund.
For the auditoriums, is it the sound system too, for when the kids are singing?
Sound system was done, right? So that was, that was remarkable, right? That made a big difference in their final shows, right? So all the kids got to enjoy that. I believe they use the auditoriums fairly regularly. So they're in them, they're out of them. So I don't, I don't know beyond that. But I do know that the sound systems were done, right? We utilized that instead of filling the pools, as it was discussed, right? Instead of filling them with dirt, we said, let's just lock up the doors and let's use that money where the kids will enjoy it the most. And that was what we did.
Okay.
So.
Any additional questions?
Presentation time.
Actually, I had an email. We had one final community comment from Tina Cairns. Along with the other ones that were emailed to me that you guys sent to me. Dear Centennial School Board, as has been stated numerous times in past meetings, what you vote on today in terms of school budget will have long-term effects for the future of our schools. We're all hoping that these effects will be positive ones. There was talk in previous board meetings of a 0% tax increase, but this is just not feasible. I know the pandemic has been very hard on many people's finances. However, putting, hunting on a tax increase this year would have a ripple effect of significant damage to our educational model and services to our students as stated in your April 27th, 2021 meeting. I'm not willing to risk the financial ruin of the school system to put additional financial hardships on individual staffs who positions would be eliminated or reduced to risk the safety of our students from deferred maintenance, for example, our track fields and buses. Or terminate student activities, especially after the last year and a half when they've missed out so much to save seven or eight dollars per month. The suggested 2.2 to 2.5 tax increase is below the Act One amount and I commend the board for the hard work that went into the proposal budget. If passed, it means that for the past three years, the board has come in with a tax increase at or below the Act One amount. Whereas in the previous eight years, taxes were raised at amounts consistently higher than the Act One. This board's willingness to balance the needs of the school system with the needs of the local taxpayers is commendable and I thank you for it. Strong schools make for a strong community. We can't rob Peter to pay Paul because we'll, we will, because we all will pay for it in the future. Thank you. Tina Cairns, 99, Sylvan Lane.
We're not saying we're going to cut any student activities. We didn't say that.
It's a community comment.
And it's, and it's, well, I'm just stating it because it's kind of misleading if people think that's what we're saying. We're not saying that. It's, it's so simple to me. I, I mean, I don't envy you, Mr. Greenwood, and I do appreciate everything you've done and all the hard work because I really would never want to be you. It's, it's got to be hard, hard. But as a taxpayer, I can think like a taxpayer. And if I can't afford to get it done this year, like. And if I can't afford to get it done this year, like I said, because it doesn't look pretty and I want to get it redone, I just wait. I just wait till next year. And then we can afford to get the track done if we just hold off on cosmetic work. That's not enhancing, it's not making our children learn, learn easier, quicker, because it's pretty. It's not. So I'm thinking like my neighbors that, you know, can't afford to get the siding done this year. The house is really ugly, but next year, we'll, we'll be able to get it next year. And we have to do what's important this year, because our heating systems would, at a homeowner, whatever's at risk, that's what you take care of. And it's simple. I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to put the burden on the taxpayers anymore. I don't think we need to do that. So we're not cutting any student activities. I don't want people to think that we are.
If you're looking at a 0%, right?
With a 0%, what would happen?
0% is a $1.7 million loss this year, right? I think that is a $1.7 million loss. One million, $755,000 loss, right? That would reduce our fund balance to, my apologies, I didn't know that was still on the, on the, on the docket, but are we currently, we have 9.3 million, so 1.7 million. That would take our fund balance to 7 million and change, right? That would be, 7 million and change is roughly a half a month, a half, a point five of our expenditures, right? So the general fund, where targeted to be 8%, right, would be, would be significantly less than that. I'm sorry, I can't do that math in my head, but.
So the 1.7 would be in addition to the 2.3 cumulative of amount that we've already reduced in revenue and cut already?
It would be in, along with the, wouldn't be, it'd be the money that we cut out, right? Which was 1.7, right? 1.6, 1.7 of reductions we did would be that, plus the million seven, right? Loss, because those two would be together.
The difference, the difference between the two amounts is that the 2.3 million is a one-time expenditure. If we lose the 1.7 million, that's cumulative, which means we have to make that up every single year.
That is correct. And we talked about that throughout the periods of time, right? Since January, we've had that discussion. We've talked about that. We've talked about the impact. The impact isn't just next year, and and that was why I was hopeful to get to the presentation, because I really wanted to draw ourselves away from looking and making decisions based on a year, right? A year, a budget decision made this year impacts every year that follows it, right? Impacts every year that follows it. You should put a zero up, there will be deficits in that, in the following year, right? There'll be deficits in the, in the following year. There'll probably be deficits in the, in the following three years, right? Deficits through 2025, and if you have, on that five-year plan, right? So if a five-year plan, you put a zero in this year, and you follow it up with two, with four years of 2.44% increases, which is an average that we have been using through this, you would have deficits through 2025. Deficits of 20 through 2025, we would end 2025 with $3.8 million in our general fund balance, right? 2.8% of our monthly expenditures.
So would a zero prevent the field and track?
You know, if you put a zero, then it's all open, right? So if you'd like to do the zero, right, you're, you're, you are reducing the, the district's financial capabilities to move forward significantly, significantly, right? And if I may, right, so if I may, just to give context, right, and my apologies, Madam Chairman, or Madam President, if this is out of order, but I, I, I think that sharing, right, the presentation, if I can, right? Can address and can show you and give you perspective to not only what is going on here. All right. Back to the beginning. So here we go. This is where we started in January of, January 27th of 2021. Our budget timeline is, remained the same. We deferred the decision on the budget at the May meeting. We're here tonight to try to move that forward. Most up-to-date on our earned income tax, right? So EIT is something that we've been tracking. EIT is included in the teacher's revised CBA that they opened up last year, and has a return of money that they gave back should EIT remain strong, right? So should EIT, over the next two years, this year and next year, exceed the change in the CPI index, the teachers get their, their step that they foregone, deferred, they get that back, right? So looking at EIT, looking at where that number is, is important. It's also a barometer of of the community to some extent, right? It is a barometer of, on the community of where it is. Through 20, through May 21st, we have collected $4.5 million in EIT compared to $4.1 million collected last year, right? EIT, so you know, is a deferred tax. So this really, when you're at May, June, you're really looking at the first quarter of this year, and likewise for, for the other years, right? So it is a deferred, it lags about a quarter, okay? And it has the note about the CBA reduction of 0.2%, right? That'll be returned. A, a interesting aspect, and this was something very puzzling to us, right? So when we were sitting here last year, when we were trying to crunch numbers, when we were reaching out to our friends at Pasbo across the county, EIT was a questionable number. How do we deal with it? What is it going to be, right? With people out of work, how is that going to be impacted? As it started off the year, the numbers never went down. I, every, every month, I'd go in, I'd look at it, and I'd say, heck, it's not going down. So I thought maybe it was very focused on individuals, right? On, on lower wage earners, and and that was, that's problematic, but that was, it was an idea, right? A more recent thought on EIT is, in fact, our gains are because we may have community members who are now working at home, right? And instead of driving into the city, they're at home. Those folks are actually saving money because EIT is a half a percent. City wage tax is two and change, if not three, right? So the city lost, but the city's loss is Centennial's gain, right? So that could be, and I'm not saying it is, it's just a more recent hypothesis around EIT, which, which could show you stronger EIT gains, right? That, no one thought of that. I wish I did a year ago, right? It would have been wonderful. But based on all of the thought and the feedback, that is what we had. These are the charts, right? So we started at our, our budget workshop. We shared this chart. We've used this chart often and and repeatedly, right? This chart shows everything from a 3%. What if we increased the rate 3%? You would have a $613,000 positive performance. That money can be used as you see fit, right? If you had a 0%, you would have a $1.7 million loss. Those are the extremes, right? Deficits in a zero, you're having deficits through 2025, as I shared earlier, a $3.8 million low in fund balance in 2025, right? And you've really got to expect a credit rating downgrade. And i- if that was four years of losses, you'd have a significant downgrade, and you'd have a fund balance that is 3.28% of your expenditures, right? Well below the 8% recommended by PDE. And in doing so, you never, in those years of deficits, you never have any money to save. You are spending everything you have, and you are moving on to the next year, right?
Can we just, when you say PDE, just so the people at home watching? Pennsylvania Department of Education. We want to make sure everyone knows when we abbreviate that that's what we're speaking of.
Thank you. Okay. Plans in the middle, right? The 2.224, which has been shared, right? That shows, that is a break-even year, right? We make $24. That's break-even. When we look at the long-range plan, we make $24 this year. We make $84,000 next year. And 125 million, I consider those break-even, right? So I believe, I'm not an expert, I'm not a bond guy, I believe there would be concern with regard to our credit rating, not nearly the concern at zero and a $1.7 million loss, but if we show a loss this year, which is what the budget called for, and we show two break-even years without increasing our fund balance, right? That is, that is a concern from what the bond evaluators would look at. They would show no gains, they would show no surpluses, they'd show no positive financial performance. The school district, any nonprofit, any for-profit, that's, that's the focus, right? It's what you do with that money, right? Our goal is to have that money. Our goal is to put that money into our capital plans, that is into our educational models, right? If we don't have the money, then the notion of the, the track or the football field, Mrs. Cross, is really, you know, whatever you want to do with it, right? So it's a fire sale, and we're going to burn it out. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but that's the reality, right? Right? There is. So we talked about this. What, what are we comfortable with? And I think that was a really important question, as we've gone through these six months, right? And I've evolved, right? Thinking's evolved continually, working through this, right? For the past six months has been, has been something else. But the problem with this question is it does just that, right? It focuses us on this year, right? It says, what can you do this year? And how low can we do this year, right? I can make $24 this year at a 2.224 increase. Got it, right? Break even. We haven't, we haven't gained, we haven't lost, we've stayed in the same position. We don't have any more money for capital, we don't have any less money for capital. We're in the same position, right? That's what that does, right? That, and that's the problem with that. And because as we've talked about, right? Why isn't it? Right, as we talked about the problem, the budget is, is, is dependent upon the prior years, right? It's dependent on the decisions we make today because there is a compounding effect. So reduced tax base now is a reduced tax base for the future, right? There's a consequence to the compounding impact. We had a presentation solely on the compounding impact. We talked about it, right? The impact on revenue, the impact on deferred maintenance. If we don't buy buses this year because we can't afford it, I can't afford nine buses last year, right? So last year, we, we had on the schedule five, we bought one. So I don't have four buses, right? This year, I have five. I can't put nine in, right? I don't have another $400,000 to add and and give to transportation to have nine. So our bus fleet gets a year older, right? Those decisions happen, right? Revenue deferred is difficult to recover, right? The CBA and the Act 93 staff deferred compensation, right? The Act 93 staff took a zero last year, right? The CBA reduced their compensation. They don't get that money back, right? And just, just those same, those same lines, the deferred maintenances is the same picture, right? Our average age of our bus fleet is 12 years. Our target life is 15 years. So if we were perfect, we'd be at about seven and a half years, the average. So we have half of the buses older, half of them younger, and we're on progress. This shows the impact of that deferral. Every year that number moves over, if you're at a million seven loss, you're going to make cuts. You're not going to live with a million seven, 1.7 million dollar loss. You're going to have to reduce things, because it's just not fiscally responsible to drive the fund balance down. It just isn't. So with that came other questions, right? And and the true and actual question is, what level of the deficit is the board comfortable with this year when considering the impact and the consequences to future budgets? We must look long-term. We must look beyond just this year. And and to that point, another question that should be asked is, what do we value? And what are our aspirations for Centennial School District, right? What do we want? What does the community want for Centennial School District? We want a good track. We want a nice auditorium. We want great academics. We want to make sure our students are learning. We want to get them where they are, and we want to improve them. That's what we're here for. That's why we come to work every day. That's why I got into education. That sole purpose for making a difference in kids' lives, right? And I do that not, I'm not smart enough, or bright enough, or quick enough to be a teacher in front of a classroom. I just do it through math, right? So I'm a mediocre math guy. This is where we need to address, right? What do we value? Here's values, right? Some of them we may value more than others, right? Responsible planning. As an accounting guy, that's my sweet spot, right? I love talking about responsible planning. But our employees, do we value our employees, right? Our support staff this year, in their agreement, has a 0.39% increase. 0.39% increase to the support staff, right? So they'll come July, they'll all get a 0.39% increase. Peasars, as we talked about as well, is going to bump their rate up a half a percent. So they get nothing. They get, you know, a little less than they would have experienced a half a percent loss. Now they experience, you know, two tenths of a percent loss, right? To our support staff, to the, you know, largest working group we have. So I think those are values, right? Do we value them? Do we put our money on the things that we value, right? Athletic facilities, performing arts, flexible curriculum, co-curricular activities, responsible taxes, warm, safe, dry facilities. That was a mantra used for years before I arrived here. Those are things that we need to think about. And as the, as the quote said, right? Where do those values go? Because that's really what the budget's about. If we value them, then we're going to budget for them. So this is what I wanted to jump to, right? This is a picture of fund balances. This is general fund balances for the Bucks County schools, for 11 of the 13 district schools in Bucks County. I excluded Bristol Borough, and I excluded Morrisville. Those two are out, relatively small, right? Centennial is at the bottom of this list on fund balance, right? $12,368,000. This is as of June 30th, 2020. So I went out, looked at everyone's audited financial statements. What are you guys doing for your reserves? What are you doing to plan for your future? And there's great reasons in all of these numbers, right? There's great reasons for all of these numbers. They could be planning to build new schools. They could be planning a lot of construction projects coming up. All of those things go into reserving funds, responsible planning, right? Centennial's at $12,368,000 as of June 30th. That represents 8.7% of our general fund, right? And 10% of our total expenditures. That's what the number is, right? Compared to Central Bucks, $81 million, right? Two and a half times the percentage of their general, of their expenditures. Two and a half times. Two and a half times more, right? So it doesn't mean they're bigger, they've, they've saved accordingly. That's an important number. So when a school district like, like Central Bucks, or, you know, New Hope-Solbury, or any of these other schools decide to take a zero, they have that flexibility inherent in their plan. They have saved, and that savings have given them the opportunity to do that. Centennial, we don't have that opportunity. That zero would, would be too harmful, and we don't have the reserve in our bank to cover for it. We just don't. The districts are all made up individually, they're all unique. So it's not a true comparison, but it is an important thing to understand where we sit, right? New Hope-Solbury is the next closest to us at $21 million in total fund balance, right? They have annual expenses of less than $40 million a year. They have annual expenses of less than $40 million a year. That's remarkable. It's remarkable, right? That is some really awesome savings as we look at it. The other districts you can see and you can look at, again, it's not perfect, but it is perspective. Shows where we are, shows where everyone else is, and I think the difference is significant. They're not close. The administrations we've been talking about has recommended that long range plan of responsible increases, but consistent increases. The notion of nothing and then 4%, nothing and then 4%. If that's what you, you know, this is ultimately your board's decision that it makes, to me, would be difficult as a homeowner, right? I have a home. I pay the same, not in Bucks County, but I pay the school taxes just the same. They need to be consistently applied, hence the long range plan, hence that long range forecast, right? This would allow the district to address current needs over the five-year plan while building a reserve, and we'd transfer positive financial performance to capital, to maintenance, to our reserve funds in order to take account and to be responsible stewards of the district's money, right? Of our taxpayers' money, and that's the goal, right? Focused on the kids, responsible planning, good stewards. The change from our May 25th, the assessment value, the final assessment value was $560,229, a 0.23% increase over the prior year, so just under a quarter of a percent increase. And that increase resulted in improved financial performance of $169,000, right? So jump back to May 25th, insert the new assessment, recalculate taxes. We now have another $169,000. We add that to the $48,000 we showed before, we're at the 218, right? That reduction, right? To go from a 2.5 to a 2.224, that $218,000 is a $218,000 reduction, right? That's $18,000 a month to the school district that we don't have, right? That for the homeowner, for the taxpayer, that represents $10.90 for the year. It represents 91 cents a month. 91 cents a month. The district is giving up $118,000 a month. The proposed final budget shows a 2.224, which is below the Act One increase. I think it was mentioned earlier by the community member, right? The board has shown the first two times in this chart since 2012, below the Act One. We've hit it a couple of times. We hit it in 2014. We hit it again in 2020. Other than that, we've been above the Act One increase, right? We've been consistently above it. The last two years under this board's leadership, we've produced two budgets that are under the Act One increase. This shows that 2.224 and a surplus of $24 and a fund balance that remains in essence unchanged. It's a break even year. Shows expenses of $125,944,000 per perspective. The 2019-2020 budget that was approved two years ago, right? That budgeted expense was $126,068. So two years later, we've continued to tighten our belts. We've continued to try to address expenses. We've continued to try to manage those expenses. Part, you can see a 0.276 increase in expenses, right? We've continued to try to manage that, and we're still below the budget that was approved two years ago in expenses, right? The revenue mix, I think, as Mr. Dixon pointed out to in the beginning, is complex, right? In 2019, we had $1.2 million in investment income. There is no investment income now. That million goes away. So it's a constant puzzle. It's a constant working to figure it all out. But those are the pieces in play just for perspective, right? And at 0.76, as I went back and I looked at the district's 11, their proposed budgets, it's about almost 2%, almost 2 full percent. Everyone else had about a 2 and a half, 2.76% gain in expenses. We have a 0.76. This shows comparatively, the financial performance compared to actuals, 18, 19, and 20, and our 21 budget, along with this projection and our five-year plan. This is the same. This hasn't changed in '25, '26. We could continue the rolling forecast, or we could adjust it back to the project, the projected Act One. The gain and the positive nature of good financial planning is that it gives you opportunities into the future. When your fund balance is $18 million, you have some more flexibility. Can we reduce it a little further? Yeah, we may be able to do that. Can we work to get these things done? Yes, we can do that. There's more things that are going to go wrong, right? Things that are always going to come up. It's going to be a roof. There's going to be a track. There's going to be a football field, right? There's all of those things, right? There's classrooms. There's educational tools that we need to be getting, teachers that we need to be supporting. Those are all very important aspects. So this shows the five-year plan, right? $24. This year, we make $83,000 next year, and then we begin to improve, right? We hit 8.2% fund balance in 2024, and by 2026, we have a fund balance of $18 million, right? That's sort of the gross number. As we've talked about, we would be taking those positive financial performance, and we'd be putting that into our capital fund. We'd be putting that into our savings accounts in order to address the future. Pros and cons. The pros, it continues the trend started last year for increases below Act One, our ability to address outstanding projects. The cons, general fund balance remains low. We are at a break even performance for the next two years. Puts risk certainly into our bond rating and our financial future. That gets talked about, limits our ability to address necessary capital improvements without asking for higher taxes later, either now or in the future. And the capital plan. So what we tried to do is look over those five years, where's the money going to go, right? So we made placeholders, for lack of a better word. The board can decide to do the track. The board could decide to never touch the auditoriums, right? You know, that would be a shame, but that's certainly, that's my opinion, so I apologize for sharing that. That's what we laid out here, okay? Each year, different projects that are going on. We begin looking at making a roofing reserve. Our roofs are warranted until 2035, '32, '32, right? But instead of waiting until 2032 to save that money, we look at beginning that now, right? We look at beginning that in 2024 and beginning to save money, right? We have concrete work. We have paving work that we need to do. We have work that we need to take on. That's what this attempts to try to identify, whether it's needed work, whether it's pretty work. That's for you to make the decisions on. It's our job to share the issue. It's your job to make that decision, right? If you make the decision that the auditoriums are fine, that's fine, right? If we're driving in on a gravel road, that's fine, right? I argue that at a local pool club I belong to, they want to replace that driveway every year. And I'm like, mother god, not a chance, right? We will walk across pebbles, right? Because it's a summer club. It should be fun. Wear flip flops, get inside and swim, right? This is what we're trying to do here, right? And this shows, over that period of time, the balances of where there are. So it takes the expenses, projects above. It says the balance. It adds in our interest. It adds in the refinancing that we did, shows you the project costs and then the ending balance. And it shows that over the time. My personal, the might want to delay a project is because in these middle years that are highlighted in yellow, they're pretty low balances, right? 193,000, 15,000. It's a pretty low capital reserve. Makes me a little nervous, right? If you want to do the fields and not do the auditoriums, that makes that nervousness go away a little bit. But again, that's for you to decide. And lastly, the budget at a 2.5%, which again is $98. It's another $10 a year to, in taxes. $8.21 a month. Shows stronger financial performance over the window. It shows consistent, right? I don't show, I don't, not forecasting into the future a zero. I'm showing consistent, responsible increases. And we're showing growth in our fund balance. We're showing growth in our performance financially, which we do for the students. We do it for the students. As the one community member, strong schools make strong communities, right? And that's where we're at. So that, my apologies, it was a little windier, and I apologize for my interjections of personal opinion.
That was very good. I just, I'm not a numbers person. In order to get the field and the track done, what do we need?
That's sort of a loaded question.
I know. Would it?
2.5%, right? I think you could do that and reasonably continue planning.
I can get both done for 2.5.
2.5, yes. Right? I think that could fit into our long range picture, right?
Can we vote? I think we all know how we're going to vote. Could we do that? All right. We're going to ask the same questions over and over again?
So we have to, I do believe we have to read. So anybody have any more questions for Mr. Dixon?
Is 1/10 of a percent still roughly equal to $78,000 in revenue?
Yep. I'm sorry, what was that?
I was asking if 1/10 of a percent is still roughly equivalent to $78,000 worth of revenue for the district.
We haven't moved the expenses at all in our three presentations.
Just to clarify, for an extra quarter of a percent over what's on the, on the agenda tonight? If we did 2.5 instead of 2 and 1/4, you're saying we could afford to do the track as well? Even though the track is $418,000 and a quarter of a percent is really only an additional 100 and...
60, 180, right?
Yeah.
Plus, plus the 48 that we had in there before, right? So it's another $218,000 to the bottom line, right? Because I'm not, I'm not reducing my surplus to fund a tax decrease. I'm taking the surplus and I'm investing that. I'm putting it in my reserve account for the future.
So more bang for our buck.
And that impact, right, as Mr. Godikson will say, as Mr. Martin had shared earlier, right? Isn't a one-timer, right? That impact of that 2.5, everything else being the same, shows you 218, 311,000 the next year. That 311 compares to the 84, $84,000. So it is continual, right? It is that compounding effect. So that is why I think we would be able to do it. I think those numbers in, being invested into the capital fund, would allow that flexibility. Again, that's, thank you.
Mrs. Allenberg? Or did anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Greenwood? Mrs. Allenberg?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. It's a quick, very quick question. So the motion, the motion as it stands right now, is it the motion for a 2.24% increase or a 2.5% increase as is written?
As is written, I believe it's 2 and 1/4.
The motion as it exists on the table is 2.224, right?
Okay.
Can we amend, can we amend the motion to 2.5?
2.5 was our proposed final budget. That was the budget that we shared with the community.
I will introduce that amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I need specifics.
What has to be done now? Because I'm not following.
I would just amend the motion to read as it does, except instead of 2.24, 2.5, because for a quarter of a percent...
Could I, excuse me, could I interrupt? That 2.24 figure does not appear in the motion. The motion appears with a budget figure and the wording that we need to authorize the budget. So I need a very, very clear motion of exactly what it is that you would like to approve.
Tom, what she's asked for, you'd have to change out that dollar value. So they need to know what the dollar value is.
The expense total, right? It's that 125,944, 944, right? That's expenses.
Well, what would it be if it were 2.5?
The expense stays the same, right? So the budget gets approved on the, you approve the expenses, right?
Can you increase the budget after you adopt the preliminary budget?
No, we cannot.
You cannot? You can only go down. You cannot go up and a preliminary budget is...
Our preliminary was 2.5.
Whatever the preliminary budget is...
It's 2.5.
It's 2.5.
It was 2.5.
Okay.
Yes. It was 2.5 in, that we posted and shared.
Can I make it simple and say that we simply amend the motion to adopt the, what's the term? The final preliminary budget?
We haven't read the original motion into the record yet.
I'm just saying, the amendment would be to adopt what we had previously passed as the final preliminary.
I'm sorry, that's just not clear.
Just switch out the dollar, switch out the dollar numbers. The new dollar number is that 125,9 something.
Effectively, what we want to do is pass the budget that was presented for public inspection.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
With a tax increase of 2.5%.
So you're saying, Mr. Greenwood, or someone is saying that the amount that is written in the, in the agenda for passing tonight wouldn't actually change?
Right? What you're doing is you're adding revenue. You're not adding expenses, right? So the budget gets approved, you approve the expensive of 125,944. That number stays the same.
Okay.
Right? We are increasing, you're approving a tax increase of 2.5%.
Don't we have to pass that somewhere?
Compared to the 2.224%.
Respectfully, I would urge you to reflect the higher of revenue or expenditures in the resolution. So there's absolute clarity. Are you able to give us what the figure would be for revenue at 2.5%?
Yes.
Thank you. That was what I was trying to say that I think she needs. Thank you, Mr. Burden.
Right.
We're trying to get to 2.5, Mr. Greenwood. Help us get there.
2.5, right? 2.5 is revenue of 126,162,966.
And that's what we need the amendment to be.
Correct. So amending the motion, I would introduce an amendment to the motion that adopts the proposed final budget, all the same wording, changing the amount to 126...
Revenue of 126 million, 162,996 dollars, and expenses of 125,944,695.
I second that.
Is that, Mr. Burden, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is someone making that motion?
I did. You seconded it. And so we have now, we now have to vote on the amendment, right?
I just want to make sure it's clear, Mr. Robal. Do we know who said what? Mr. Miller made the motion.
Okay. Now, what I have is that Mr. Dixon made a motion, which was seconded by Mr. Miller, to approve the resolution as it's written with an amendment that the revenue figure would be 126 million, 126,162,996 is the revenue figure. The expenses remain the same as in the original motion, 125,944,695. That's a tax increase of 2.5%. Does that capture the essence of what was stated?
Yes.
Do we need to state that this matches the proposed preliminary budget that was posted for public inspection?
The tax increase matches that number, the 2.5%. Right? It's now based on a final assessment, which is different.
Do we need that to be part of the motion? Or is it sufficient that is included as a discussion item in the minutes?
That's up to you.
Can we vote on the motion? Can we move forward?
Mr. Robal, do we need that, or is it optional?
I can't tell you whether we need that or not. That appears to be like an additional amendment. So that's kind of your call, whether you want to add that or not.
We can move forward with the vote.
Okay. With the clarifying statement that the... With the clarifying statement that this matches the proposed preliminary budget posted for public inspection, do we want that added?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
With an increase of 2.5%.
Right, I have that.
That's the connection to the proposed, previously proposed budget.
Correct, because we're increasing the revenue by 120, the revenue figure to 126,162,966, which is the tax increase of 2.5%.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on that?
Yes, please.
Okay. We're doing a roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Burdenek?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
6-3.
Yes, I just wanna be clear, you know that the intent of that was to pull the trigger so tomorrow for the track to be, so that means the track and auditoriums, everything is still gonna get done, to make sure we follow through with Mr. Wortenby, okay? Thank you.
I know, I asked three times, Mr. Greenwood, and thank you for explaining it, as long as the track and the field.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I believe we need to amend the second motion to make it clear that we want the track project included in the 21-22 capital budget.
Thank you, Mr. Burdenek.
Second. Are you moving that, Mr. Burdenek?
I'm making that, I'm making that motion.
I'll second.
What about the auditoriums, then? Are they gonna be part, are we gonna vote on that separately, or is that gonna be, are we gonna vote on everything separately in the capital budget, or are we just gonna vote on this one thing?
No, just the, just that we added the track into that budget, that's, that we added the track, the auditorium's already in place, the track has been added new, so we need to vote on that, or make the amendment.
This is those capital plans that Mr. Burdenek referred to, right? Reserve Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Debt Service Fund, and the Food Service Fund.
So, how would that be worded? Would that just be, and just add the track in there, is that all we would have to do?
Correct.
The track was 419, is that correct?
We would add the track to the Fund 39 budget at a $419,000.
Okay.
Wasn't the track previously already approved?
The track project was, right?
It was removed when the high school fell down.
When we had to address the high school.
Had the issue with the high school.
We weren't allowed into the high school, we weren't allowed into it, based on our architectures, architects, engineers' view, right? The building was closed.
Let me, let me make a suggestion here, we have the funding capability. I don't know that we have all the details on the track. We certainly want it to be safe for everyone that uses it, and we want it to remain a showpiece for the district. The track was originally designed to be six lanes, we added eight lanes to make it a showplace, and it has been used for tournaments. I don't see any reason we couldn't take another week to get all of this detail together for the board and make that final decision at our meeting on next Tuesday.
Can we vote on this budget, please?
So quickly, the amount that would change with the amendment to add the track, it would go from $2,880,150 to $3,299,150. That is the amount that would have to be amended to add the track price in.
So, are we just going to read the 4.3 and then add the track of $419,000 in there? Is that accurate? Right.
If Mr. Miller, who's the head of the operations committee, says we need a little bit of time to evaluate exactly what's...
We've had plenty of time, we need to vote on...
I'm going with what the chair of the operations committee says, we can wait another week.
He's on the phone.
So...
I mean, and that was my suggestion, this thing came...
We didn't vote on this last week, and we had this special meeting today, so we're here to vote on the budget, which is what we should be doing.
We did.
The budget is done.
The budget is done.
We've already, we've already heard all this.
Well, only, Mr. Miller only made a suggestion that we delay the vote on exactly what we're doing with the, we're going to do the track, but, Mr. Miller, I assume you want to look into whatever specific details you don't quite have, you're the chair of the operations committee, I defer to you on that.
I got the same emails that you got, and these came by surprise, and I don't know to what extent people were urged to write the board and create, you know, the sinkhole is not a sinkhole, we know that for a fact.
Have you seen it, Mr. Miller? Have your little legs run on that track? You're insinuating things that you should not be insinuating.
Will you let me finish, Mrs. Brancato? I'm not saying not to do it. I'm saying to make sure that we do it right and we do it timely. We may need to do it now, but I'm not go, what PIA official would call you instead of the administration of this district?
I guess maybe one that trusts me, Mr. Miller.
Okay, so that's, this is not gonna be helpful, so let's just, we can...
So, then, I'm answering Mr. Dixon's question, which is, we don't know what we don't know, and seven days is not going to change anything, because we're not going to start it this week. We have the money now available, we can do it, but I think we need to find out from our own administration, and not a cadre of parents who were urged to write letters to the board, when we don't even know who was the one who originally made the statement. It did not come from our administration.
Mr. Wortenby?
Mr. Miller, this is Robert Wortenby. In terms of synergy and having Miller Sports Construction mobilized and texting him moments ago, as well as speaking to him on Friday, if we do pull the trigger with the track, time is of the essence, because it's still a lot of work. He still has to get his vendors and suppliers on board, obviously, he doesn't hold the rubber for the track, he has to get that from a supplier, that has to be ordered, so there is a fair amount of work that needs to be done. Fourth with, for me, getting a PO out there tomorrow, a purchase order out there tomorrow.
Well, then, let me, let me save you the trouble. Mr. Dixon asked me what I would recommend, and I wouldn't make a recommendation without getting a recommendation from you, so if that's your recommendation, it is good enough for me.
Thank you, sir.
I believe we have a motion on the floor, don't we?
Yes, Mr. Burdenek made the motion to amend 4.2 to include the track replacement of an additional $419,000. Is that correct?
Has that been, yeah, has that been seconded?
I do not have a second.
I will second it.
Okay, then we do a roll call vote, is that what we're gonna do?
Mr. Burdenek?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Can you read that one more time?
Certainly. We are voting on item 4.2, which adopts the Capital Reserve, Capital Projects, Debt Service, and Food Service Fund budgets. The amounts are listed in the motion as $200,000, $2,850,500, and the other figure, the 3,334261, has been amended to include $419,000 for the track.
So, it doesn't really, it doesn't really matter what I vote, because you already voted to raise taxes, you've already done that.
We're voting on the Capital Projects.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever, I don't really care.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
8-0-1, one abstention. Yes, Mr. Greenwood, it included all three, Capital Reserve, Capital Projects, Debt Service, Food Service Fund budgets, with the addition of the $419,000 for the track.
Any, any further board discussion or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to end this circus here tonight.
Any more communications? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm in.
Can I get a second?
Sure.
Second. Have a good evening.